My condolences to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose little liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call the meeting from order and the first order of business, we are going to give the oath of office to Carl Kofat, Kofa, Kofa, I'm telling Kofa.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, Carl, just stand wherever. If you just want to stand next to me, that'd be great. Good evening. Yeah. Tonight, I just wanted to, we're instituting a new tradition. A lot of communities have a swearing-in process for their officers, which I always thought was a very nice process for two reasons. It's a big moment for the officer who, you know, has trained and studied hard to devote their life to law enforcement and to show a respect to the council. You are voted in to represent the community and you allowed us to hire this officer. So, and we thank you for that. So, I'd like to introduce our new officer and I'm very proud to introduce him. He has been a part-timer for four, going on four years now? Carl, is that correct? Yes. And formerly from Hector PD and has done a phenomenal job and we're thrilled to have him on board. Carl, do you want to maybe say in a few words?
Sure. Well, thank you all for, this is really a great opportunity for me. I really appreciate that you extended out the job opportunity. And so, a little bit about myself, I live in Fairfax. I've been there for about, just about eight years now. I'm a U.S. Navy veteran and I've been a police officer for almost 14 years now with the city of Hector. Boy, just trying to get a feel for the community and really appreciate everybody's been really great so far.
We're gonna have the mayor do the honors and Carl's lovelier half Melissa is going to pin on the badge if you want to come on up, Melissa. And I will step aside. Where are we in the camera? Are we in the camera angle?
Okay. Carl, do you solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that you will faithfully discharge your duties of Withersfield Police Department with fairness, integrity, diligence, and impartiality, and that you will uphold fundamental human rights and accord equal respect to all people according to the law?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you all.
So, welcome, Bob. Okay, we're gonna move on here again. I'm going to see if there's, is there anybody here for the open public forum? If not, we're going to proceed. Approval of agenda, Bob, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay, Pete?
No.
Julie?
Nothing.
Sir.
Jenny?
I would just like to remove item E, a request for permission.
Okay. Oh, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So, move.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Is there any further discussion? Not, we proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. Okay, the consent agendas, everybody had time to take a look at that. Regular meeting, claims for the month. Fire department, okay, and the request repayment, please take it out. If there's no questions, then create a motion.
So, move.
Motion made by Julie.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bob. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, we proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side. Motion carries. We have a public hearings, new business, construction project, 2019A. Brian?
I asked Brian and Shannon to come tonight to kind of go over the financing portion of the project. Once we did the feasibility study, the numbers came in a little higher than what we had projected. And I just want to make sure everybody understands and knows what's going on before we move forward any farther with the project.
So, I'm not sure if maybe Shannon, you want to speak first of all? I think you had mentioned, you had maybe crunched the numbers on rate increases and things like that.
Yeah, this, this project will, we have $30,000 coming on the levy for the 2018 project. And then this would add another $20,000 to our annual levy, which would be 50, roughly $50,000 on our levy for the project costs. It would also add another $9.07 per customer per month to our storm sewer charge for just the 2019 project.
I think what we're, what we're looking at here is, do we, do we slow down the construction project? Do we maybe put it off for two years, three years, and slowly get our utilities up to par so that we don't have any huge adjustments quickly? Just give us a few more years to build our utilities up to where they need to be so that we don't have a huge increase in our levy.
And one of the things that Brian did talk about was maybe we could modify some of the infrastructure, smaller sewer.
I mean, if you're looking at maybe, and I think your biggest concern seemed to be at the storm sewer cost and maybe what that might do to those rates, Jenny. But, you know, as we mentioned in the feasibility study, we had talked about trying to eliminate some upstream crossings of the railroad tracks. So, that's part of the reason, or I guess part of the large cost associated with the storm sewer this project is because we're ending up with a larger pipe just by the fact that we're adding more drainage area. Essentially, that would be discharging down here on the north side of the railroad tracks. And then that cost also gets kind of even more increased because we're expecting that they're gonna have to do some type of shoring or boring or something along the DFA silos there just because it would have to be, it would have to be both bigger and deeper in order to, you know, be able to drain the upstream area. So, you know, another option would be to make, you know, maybe not try to eliminate all or both, both of those crossings. I think you're gonna have to probably, I think, well, it'd be the city's best interest, I think, to bring storm at least up to Carver Street and then eliminate that line that goes underneath the DFA building and that also goes under the railroad tracks. And it would probably be a good idea to extend it up to Main Street at a minimum. But there is some infrastructure in place downstream that could be used that was put in place, I think, when that last, when there's some storms were worked on in the south side of the railroad tracks. That was sized for old standards so that it wouldn't get you a 10-year storm event, but it'd still maybe get you five. So, basically what I'm saying is there are options maybe to shrink down at least the storm sewer costs in the project. But I don't know if that's gonna be enough to impact, I guess, what the concerns are. Well, for example, I'd have to dig into it here a little bit. The... So, for example, the jacking of the 60-inch storm pipe, it's about $1,000 a lineal foot. You know, this is just off the top of my head. If you're gonna get it down to, let's say you could get it down to a 30-inch to accommodate, you know, the Main Street area, then that would drop down to 75, assuming that you wouldn't have to go as deep and you wouldn't have to bore it. So, you're talking about, you know, 200 feet there, I think is what it was, or maybe it was, I'd have to jump back and look. It was about 275 feet. So, you're looking at, you know, maybe saving a couple hundred thousand, you know, on the storm sewer if that was, you know, a modification that was made.
The total cost of the project was at 1.7?
The total cost, it was... Yep. It was 2.9 and then with what we had estimated for the county participation costs, that would bring the city portion down to 2.3 and that was, you know, just based off our preliminary estimates, yeah. And the portion of that, that was storm sewer, was about 775,000 plus, you know, a 10% contingency would put you at about 850,000 or so. So, it's, you know, it's a fair chunk of the, fair chunk of the project. But then here again, you know, you gotta also consider this project would, it would also be, you know, the way we had calculated, you're getting about $600,000 worth of participation from the county. Now, that's obviously gonna have to be final, you know, calculated based on final cost, but, you know, so you are saving a fair amount of money on this project just by virtue that, you know, the county is participating. But that doesn't have any effect on any of the utilities though. I mean, that's just the street cost.
And there, there's also factors for, I mean, there's also consequences if we don't do the project. I mean, we don't have to do it this year, but we, I don't know that we can put it off indefinitely because there are portions of town. I mean, the reason we're doing this project is to lower the sewer line so that we can lower the line out by Third Street, which is in very tough shape. And also the highway, you know, we really should try to coordinate so that we're in place to do the highway infrastructure when MINDAT tries to come through town and do Highway 19 or else the cost of repairing that is all horrible.
But they said that's something they would be doing within the next 10 years?
Yeah, yeah, probably.
Right. So, kind of what, in talking with Joel, kind of the goals were to eliminate the two sanitary crossings on Hennepin, I believe it's Hennepin and Carver, or at least get to the point where those could be eliminated when, when they do redo 19. So, I guess in order for that to be done, you'd have to do First Street at least up to Carver and then, you know, do your sanitary from all the way up to 19, I guess. So... But, you know, I guess I don't know how cost-effective it would be if you're just gonna stop at Carver. I mean, because you're already disrupting that whole DFA area and that's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be something I don't know if you're gonna want to have to deal with two different construction seasons in a row. It might be kind of nice to get that all knocked out in one shot. But, you know, that's not to say it couldn't be done.
What's the cost of the shoring because of the tanks?
The shoring, I think what we had done, I had spoken with a couple of different companies that do that type of work and they had thought that the pipe jacking would probably be cheaper, so that's what I had included in this cost. I think in my preliminary estimates, it would have maybe been, you know, $25,000 more, that's just off the top of my head, for the shoring. So, then that's why we put the pipe jacking in here. And, and I think another thing to maybe consider that we don't really know yet because we don't have a survey done in the area is that we do have costs in here for also jacking the sanitary in that area, but we might have enough, we might have enough distance from those footings where we might be able to get by without jacking that sanitary. So, there might be some costs saved there. There are some costs built into here for, you know, removal of some contaminated soil, but that's kind of a, you know, based on, and I'll touch on this later maybe, but the phase one was done. So, there's, there's some, some positive news in there that, you know, it doesn't look like there's any real red flags as far as that goes. But at the same time, I think it's probably still wise to have some money budgeted for it in case you do come across something that needs to be done there.
Hey, you dug those tanks out. I remember there was guys taking samples of soil there.
Yep.
Said it was, but you think there could still be some?
Well, the reason I think it could still be some is because when they did the soil borians that we did for the feasibility study, they did have a little bit of petroleum smell that they came across at the intersection of First Street and Hennepin. So, that, you know, kind of raises a little bit of concern, but they tested it and they said the levels were probably low enough based on that one spot that it could probably be reused and wouldn't have to be discarded somewhere, disposed of somewhere.
I guess I'm Mr. Conservative, I hate to spend money, but if we're gonna do the project, I hate downsizing it and then after
and Gordy...
20 years from now, you say, oh, we should have done this and we should have done that.
Gordy and I talked about it this morning too, and he doesn't want that storm sewer any smaller.
Yeah, you know, I...
Because down by production of Paul Mester, if we get three, four inches, we fund, you know.
Right.
I'm sorry, did you have something else for?
No, I just want to bring that up.
But I was, I just, but I was gonna say is, at the rate you guys want to do this, we have to slow down, say after this project, because you can't keep going as fast as you're going because you're gonna run out of money.
I asked that to last council.
Yeah, you know, you just don't...
So, what are we talking?
Well, Shannon, you had some numbers, some cost estimates or, and I think that's what we need to know is, what are the cost estimates? What is it gonna look like if we go ahead with this project or if we wait a couple of, not, not, not doing the project, but doing it, but just waiting a couple of years to make the adjustments to the rates so they're not so drastic?
All right. Talk about all those things. I'll just pass around a preliminary bond schedule I did with some impact stuff. Just hand that around. You know, we're generally not a fan of delaying something that we're gonna inevitably do because construction costs go up, you know, more to 6% every year. And so, delaying it for a couple of years doesn't get us much unless we have a pretty significant recession and all of a sudden, construction costs come down. You know, if you're gonna have a meaningful delay or maybe you phase in the project in multiple phases and do half now and half five, six years from now, you know, that, that's probably an option. Spreading it by a year or two really doesn't accomplish a whole lot in the whole scheme of things other than generally we see our, our construction costs go up. But, you know, I, from my perspective, I always look at this stuff based on what we think our taxpayers will care to afford. And so, that's kind of my approach in talking to you about this. You know, can you borrow the money? I believe you certainly can. It's a matter of, you know, do you want to place additional burden to this extent on your customers and taxpayers? And, you know, that's what we try to quantify. From the initial capital improvement work I did for the city, this project cost did go up and so the impacts did go up a little bit. I give you a preliminary debt service schedule for, you know, basically we'd be borrowing about $2,395,000 based on the current estimate. Total project cost is at 2.9, but we have $590,000 in county cost participation. I structured this over 20 years. We have special assessments that I wish were more because that translates into more affordability for the city, but our special assessment amount is relatively low for a project this size.
And I can speak on that real quick, and that's largely because the assessment policy that the city has been using is based on 25% of just the street cost. So, then because this project is basically 50% of it is, the street is paid for almost entirely except for a portion of the storm sewer cost by the county participation. That's why those levies, although the people that are getting levied might think they're high, they're relatively low considering the extent and size of the project.
I say, recognize that you can assess for costs paid by another unit of government. So, you could, you could assess for that county paid portion if you chose to. I understand you have difficulty with the assessments as they are, so I'm not gonna harp on you too much, but that, that is an option. Ultimately, structuring this debt over 20 years, we come up with payments that are about $160,000 a year in current market conditions. Jenny was talking about as far as funding mix is pretty close. It's been tweaked a little bit. Our tax levy annually for just this project would be about, not quite $19,000, we'll call it. Water revenues would need to contribute about $16,000, $17,000 a year. Sanitary sewer is at $52,000 and storm is at about $70,000. And then we have special assessments that make up the balance of that payment at about $10,000 a year that we'd collect through special assessment payments. That impact, you know, it depends on, I haven't seen all of the rate increases that you adopted at the end of this year, but ultimately, your water utility can probably continue to charge at the same level and be okay because we have generated surpluses in that utility. Last couple of years, we had some debts drop off and that sort of thing, which created capacity. Ultimately, our sewer rate probably needs to get, sanitary sewer rate probably needs to get to about $52 a month for a 5,000-gallon customer. And, you know, we're not there yet and it's a ways to go to get there from where we're at today with regard to our rates. Recent history, let's see, for that same customer size, you know, we've been in the low 30s. So, we're talking about $17, $18 a month in impact on a sanitary sewer bill. And, you know, frankly, on storm, I thought we were closer to $12.50 with the new numbers that I was looking at that we'd have to add onto the storm sewer bill. So, between tax impact, that second page is just meant to quantify, what does this mean to our average customer? $100,000 home, you know, assessors estimate a market value. They use 5,000 gallons for water and sewer, which would be, you know, a small family usually. And then a storm sewer charge, it's about $450 annually, you know, between taxes and utility rates that this is gonna be the difference. Some of that may have already been adopted with end-of-the-year rate increases that I'm not familiar with, but...
Not to this extent.
Not to this extent, no. And so, ultimately, to do a project of this magnitude, it's a big project, you know, make no bones about it. This is a lot of money. That's probably where rates and taxes need to be in order to support it. And so, you have to decide if that's appropriate, if there's sufficient need for this project to be implemented. In order to implement that, again, I would fall back on delaying in general. Unless you see a big recession that's gonna bring construction costs down, usually we only see construction costs go up annually and that's been the trend the last few years. And so, it probably hurts you more than it helps you unless you have a significant, more meaningful delay or you split the project and do, you know, a portion now and a portion five or six years from now or something like that when we have some additional debt that drops out. So, more than happy to answer questions on the materials, you know, the projections based on current market conditions for bond interest rates. You know, we did a pretty extensive analysis of your utilities and I'm fairly comfortable with what we projected for payments. We've mapped out all your debt payments and looked at those sorts of things, so...
So, the first payment is due 2021 or 2020?
Well, 2020 is when you're collecting the money to make the payment. So, you're, you know, at the end of the day, we're envisioning that you're, you know, putting some of these rate increases in place by the start of 19, you know, for collection in 19 into 20, you know. We can do some things to give you a year or two to ramp things up even into 2020 and 2021, but, you know, that just means pushing principal back a little bit further, which costs you more money on interest and, you know, you gotta recognize you gotta get to the same place anyway with regard to rate structure if you're gonna implement this project.
I got a question.
Sure.
How much would the average household sewer charge go up?
It's about $18.42.
I didn't see that.
Yep.
$18.42 and $12 for the sewer storm.
That's on a 5,000-gallon customer. Yeah, those are in addition to...
I'm not talking 5,000.
Well, that's what an average customer is.
Yeah, some use 3,500 gallons, some use five, I use five, you know. I think that's in between a senior household and a large family. It's 5,000 is kind of in the middle, so...
We had a lot of poor people.
Well, then they would have less of an increase if they're using less than 5,000 gallons, so... But at the end of the day, it gives you an idea of what the impact is.
So, I know I'm asking you to look in a crystal ball, but what do you think interest rates, I mean, that's another thing you have to think about if we put it off for a couple of years?
You know, I, I don't have a crystal ball. We, you know, Fed continues to raise interest rates. That has modest impacts on the bond market, but overall, you know, interest rates have been in the same magnitude for an awfully long time. So, I'm not gonna tell you I think they're gonna skyrocket because I haven't, I haven't seen it yet in 17 years. But I do see construction costs go up, you know, considerably. And so, I think that's the one you gotta think about the most, you know, with regard to what...
Stock market lost over 11...
Yeah, but it's been good for over a year.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna, we're gonna have a correction.
We just did.
Okay, hitting back yes.
One, one thing I guess I kind of failed to mention, these estimates will be getting updated because after we spoke with the county, they would like to add on from the railroad tracks to Main Street as part of the project. Now, that's, you know, ultimately something the city would have to prove to also, but, you know, that would add a little bit more storm sewer cost. But I think that's basically about it. I mean, it'd be their street costs again, but...
Well, indirectly, it's still ours because they'll put it on us.
Well, right.
Through the county tax, so...
If, if, I guess, in thinking about this, I'd be more inclined, you're mobilizing all these different forces that don't do anything to your streets or utilities when you do a project, you know, the engineer, me, you know, other folks along those lines. As I've said many, many times, you're more efficient the larger the project you do. I would say, you know, if you want to delay something, delay the whole thing a little bit, you know, to give yourself time rather than split it into two because then you're gonna pay a finance guy twice, you're gonna pay an engineer twice, you're gonna have assessment processes twice. You know, it adds a lot of stuff that isn't fixing streets and utilities when you break something up. And so, if you weren't comfortable proceeding right away, you know, I guess that would be approach I would take over splitting it into two projects would...
Right. And I guess I would, I would tend to agree with that just from a construction standpoint also just because where you're gonna split it, you're still gonna have a lot of impacts to, you know, the DFA and Bartles down there. So, it's really, it's really gonna be, not the, like I say, not that you couldn't do it, but, you know, it's really not gonna be that convenient of a project to split up into two parts, really.
And other alternatives to financing, I believe that PFA is in the discussion.
Yep.
I would tell you that your grant eligibility, you probably, you'll think I'm crazy when I say this, but your rates probably aren't high enough to trigger a great grant contribution because they're looking at on average probably at least 50 bucks a month per utility before they get real excited about giving you a grant. But they would do a low-interest loan that would improve these numbers a little bit over a 20-year period at one and a half percent on the utility stuff. So, they're, they're worth, you know, trying to keep engaged with. It doesn't hurt to talk to your legislators and tell them that... So, it would do the utility stuff, storm, which is a big part. It would do water and sewer. You might still have to privately finance some of the street work, but that's a pretty modest part of this project. So, staying in that mix, you know, might be a driver for when you do the project as well. If all of a sudden they say, well, maybe not this year, but next year, we think you're eligible or you score enough points, you know, that could drive when you decide to do it as well because, again, they're gonna lend you money at 1 to 1.5%, which is better than the 3% I'm showing you, so...
Right. And what I've started, I've already started the application process for the clean water revolving fund side of things because that's due, the application's due on March 2nd, which is also why we wanted to get this feasibility study done this early also. But now, I guess I would, it would be my recommendation that we still apply for it regardless of whether or not the city is unsure if they're gonna move forward with the project because the project will stay on there for up to five years before it'll drop off. Now, you might have to go back and adjust your cost based on, you know, inflation or something like that. But at the same time, it's, it's not gonna hurt you to get on that list. It doesn't, you know, force you to move forward.
Getting on that list will give us the, the lower interest rate?
It'll get you, well, it'll get you a score, right.
If you score high enough, it would give you access to at very least low-interest loans and maybe some grant dollars. And the, the communities like Stewart, just down the road, that have aggressively gone after street and utility reconstruction are getting more significant grant contributions for their projects because they have hit those affordability levels on their utility rates, so...
So, the thing that, what's the bigger issue for most of you? Is it the total cost of the project or is it looking at the impact on individual households?
Well, I think for me, it's the impact on individual households happening within, yeah, just like that.
So, is there any way that we can do the project and give ourselves a cushion to spread out the impact of that or not really?
Again, with bonds, you can, you can adjust principal and payments. So, you could have smaller payments to start with, you know, over the first two or three years. I don't recommend any longer than that on a phase in because you're really pushing up principal then and, you know, you're paying a lot of extra interest. But you absolutely have the ability to do that to allow for additional time to phase in utility rates.
Otherwise, we would have next year, 2019, possibly 2020, and then first payment due...
And our storm sewer and sanitary don't have reserves to cover this project cost. You have to be willing to commit to those higher utility rates. You have to be willing to commit to those higher utility rates.
Yes, we do it or.
Yeah.
Shannon, can we afford this?
Uh, you know.
What's your opinion?
My opinion is you can borrow the money. It's whether you decide that it's appropriate to charge your customers this much for the repairs that you're proposing, so.
That's a lot of money.
It is, and, you know, getting on the PFA's list is one way to communicate to them that you're doing everything you can to find the cheapest source of financing that you can.
It's not a decision that has to be made tonight.
No.
You're going to be going forward with that study?
Well, we'll be moving forward with updating it, I guess, based on the assumption that we would add that portion of the Main Street from the railroad tracks to First Street at the county's request. And then at that point, we had already set a date for the improvement hearing at the beginning of April, so we can move forward with that. And, you know, that might help you kind of gauge, I guess, a little bit of the public, you know, public input on it a little bit. And then I believe it's six months from, there's a window there, as soon as you hold the hearing, you have six months where you have to move forward with the project or basically let it die is how I understand statute. So if outside of that, you know, if you didn't want to approve the project within that six months, then you'd have to go through the hearing process again, you know, if seven months down the road, you decided you want to move forward or one year later, you know what I mean? So once you hold that hearing, that kind of starts to clock for that six months.
It's a, it's a year. You have a year from when you have your improvement hearing to awarding a contract. So if you don't award a contract, then you have to re-notice that in original hearing.
I thought it was six months from the hearing to when you order the improvements. And then a year from ordering the improvements is when you have to have the.
I'm pretty sure it's a year, but we can check statute.
I remember Shannon, one time you did that, we wanted to borrow money for something else with water and our rates would have been about three times as high as we were now charging at that time and we decided to make our borrow cheaper.
That was USDA funding. We don't qualify for that.
You might, but they're gonna, they're gonna give you a loan and that loan is going to be over thirty-nine years and it's going to be probably close to four and a quarter percent. And I found that stuff tends to wear out before thirty-nine years, so I didn't think it was a great deal.
Well, I just remember we did a study and it was not, because then you don't have to pay. Favorable for us.
I remember that, yeah. We would have had to triple our rates.
Yeah.
You think we're able to do this?
That's your call.
Jenny.
I don't know the inside.
Jenny brought this up because of the costs, I mean, and I'm glad that you did.
Yes.
We need to realize that it's kind of a wake-up call, I think, after you have talked to Shannon.
I have no insights of what, you know, I'm just a council member.
Go ahead.
You know, one way to help you guys decide what's affordable or not is to, you know, I've done this before where we've surveyed communities in a twenty-mile radius or whatever to see what they're paying for water and sewer and property tax, so you can see, you know, what your peer group is doing.
Well, I did Sibley County and Fairfax, you know, and we're right, we're right in the middle.
Yep, so then you would currently, yes.
But we can't really just stick our heads in the sand and say, we're just not going to do this and we're going to hope for the best.
No, what Kelly and I kind of talked about today is if you guys decide to not do it in twenty nineteen, push it, if you decide to push it off a couple of years, I would still plan on having it on the agenda once a year for discussion until we get to a point where we are able to do it.
But we'd even know before the end of this year if we would apply or if we would.
Well, no, I could still apply for the revolving loan funds this year and then they would just get you on the project priority list. And then after you're on that list, basically the next step would be to apply for the intentional or, you know, the IUP, basically, the intended use, you know, that you're going to move forward with the project. So kind of the first step is to get on that PPL, you're on there for five years if you don't either get funding approved or the project doesn't move forward. So there's really no, there's no commitment basically involved with the PPL, it's just getting your score and getting on that list, basically.
Well, how do you know if you, I mean, when you qualify?
They.
Get on the list, but how do you know when?
They put up, like, so like, for example, with the twenty seventeen project, that one was a little different because it wasn't, they didn't, the legislature didn't give funding for any twenty seventeen projects before we had started the project, basically. But what they do is they'll, they'll take a look at everything, everybody's score, and then depending on how much money they got, they find what they call a fundable range. So it just depends if you fall within that fundable range. I guess if I remember looking back at what ended up being fundable for the twenty seventeen project, I believe we would have fallen in that range, but there just was no money at the time.
So if you apply at the deadlines in March, when would we hear anything about our eligibility?
That, I'd have to check, I'd have to check on that because the, it'd be different, it's the, the Clean Water Fund is March and then I think it's May for the Water Fund, so I don't, I don't recall when they send out the list of when they figure out the fundable range.
So pushing it back a year or two isn't for us to sit back and wait and decide if we really want to do this or not. It means we would have to start rate increases, start them up, continue them. It's not saying we don't know, we don't.
So I'm not saying that's a bad idea, but from what you know about the rates that construction costs go up, if we say we're going to wait two or three years, is the, and we'll build up our reserves, is that going to get eaten up by the increase in construction costs if we put it off?
Nobody has a crystal ball that can tell them that. I, I don't think it hurts to build up cash reserves though in advance of doing a project. In fact, I think right now you could use funds from your water utility to buy down the project a little bit, but you probably want to be in a similar position in sewer and storm sewer. And so doing that for a period of time isn't a horrible strategy by any stretch, so.
Cash speaks, huh?
Yeah, oh, it helps make things more affordable, that's for sure, because you reduce the impact, you know, going forward, so.
I understand Julie's question too. I mean, if the cost of construction goes up two, three percent a year for the next three years, I mean, that's significant amount too.
Okay, now that takes care of that street more or less. What about like our Main Street? What happens there? Main Street meaning north-south to me.
Well, that far can we go?
Well, Main Street's county state aid highway two.
Forward to, huh?
Main Street is county state aid highway two. The county would pay a portion of that also.
But I mean, what, you know.
I guess as far as Main Street goes, that would probably kind of fall on whenever it fell on the county's schedule partly, but, but then I guess in two thousand seventeen, if you remember, we put together kind of a cost, cost estimates for not just this twenty nineteen, quote unquote, twenty nineteen project. We put it together for all the way up to Second and Third Street and then also for Hennepin and Carver, South Hennepin and Carver. So I guess we were kind of mapping out, you know, a ten or fifteen-year plan depending on how aggressive the city wanted to be with it. Those seem to be the problem areas that would need to be addressed first.
And I, so what I'm saying is, is at the rate that we're charging the people or the assessments, are we going to have enough money realistically to keep on the schedule that we are?
Right, I mean, that's.
Yeah, and it would depend on how aggressive.
I asked you, Kelly, I said, well, you're going to run out of money and you said, well, you gotta keep going, well, yeah, but.
All right, Pete, I'm going to.
He told me that, yeah, Pete's going to give me.
I'm saying, you know, you gotta have money, you know.
I just want to make sure you guys know what we're getting into before the project's done and then we have to do this and it's not, and everybody's unhappy, so.
Does the industrial park and that, because some of that is business, does that vastly improve for them? I mean, so that you can say, well.
As far, well, I mean, this project.
No, we want to keep our businesses here, so we gotta have up to the utilities and.
Well, this one, these utilities don't really serve the industrial park. They serve DFA mostly and Bartles, but not necessarily the industrial park.
The idea behind this is kind of looping our system or creating more capacity to get the water out?
Yeah, we're basically, basically the problem areas are Second and Third Street and we have to, in order to be able to accommodate improving that to where they should be because there's, there's, there's depth issues there where the sanitary is really shallow. Well, in order to get deeper sanitary and also similar to the storm sewer, we're trying to eliminate that crossing that goes underneath the railroad tracks at the very south end of, is it Niklet Street? Because that goes underneath, you know, there's easement under private property there. In order to get that depth, we have to come all the way back to this east side sanitary interceptor because that's the only place you can gain that amount of depth. So we're starting on the downstream side in order to get to where is the really bad area, basically, and do the, what I would say is probably the, improving that the right way.
Is.
So I mean, that's, and that, but then also being at the downstream end, then you have the added cost of, you know, a larger storm sewer, larger sanitary sewer and things like that, deeper stuff, so it's a little more costly to build. You know, in theory, it'll get, it should get a little bit more reasonable once you get to the upstream end because you're doing smaller pipe and it's not as deep and things like that, but, you know, this project is just, this is just not a good area. I mean, so that adds cost to.
I wish this wasn't recorded, but I think DFA uses a lot of water. They get a big break on it.
They pay the same as everybody else.
It's hard to swallow rate increases, but if you think about the positive impact on people, if their basements don't flood and we don't have water issues, that's, that's kind of a big deal.
Right, I mean, I mean ultimately, you know, things wear out. I mean, so you're not going to get around, I mean, it's not going to last forever. Now, is it going to last for, you know, ten or fifteen years? It could, you know, it could.
How old is this system right now that's currently in place?
The sanitary sewer, I think that was like a hundred years old.
A hundred years old?
For which part of town?
Nineteen sixteen was this, when it was constructed for the sanitary.
And when that was scoped, there were some areas in there that.
Yep, yep, there were some areas that were, you know, some, some cracks and things like that. It wasn't, you know, maybe the worst we've seen, but, but there again, we're trying to get to the worst part, so.
So what happens if there's, you know, a pretty big failure at a time when we're not planning a project?
You would, I mean, you'd have, you'd have to repair it.
Do a Band-Aid fix until you can.
That's what we've been doing.
Well.
Any more questions for Shannon? You know, D L A brought up the idea of blocking that line instead of, it was by DFA and actually avoiding some of the situation by going into.
If you took it up the alley by the phone station and took it across DFA's parking lot, you didn't have to jack up the streets and you didn't have to shore up.
We'd have to buy that house, correct?
Well, we'd have to come to agreement with them, either A, buy their house or B, buy their yard, maybe give them a free garage, because it's going to, they're going to have to take their garage up. But then you'd go across Bartles gravel parking lot, you don't have to tear up any of the streets, you just got to bring the sewer stubs back out. How much does that take off the project? Because you don't have to jack, you don't have to shore, you don't have to get that overnight work done to keep the business open.
Yeah, I don't know how that would work. I mean, you're looking at acquiring private property there and I don't know, I'm not really sure how that would play out. I mean, if you're talking about basically buying that property.
Probably cheaper than what we're going to pay to Jack. I mean, I'm not, I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure how much that house is worth.
We'd have to buy the telephone office.
Come to that alley right there next to it. Because to go down the hill out of Bartles gravel parking lot's got to be a hell of a lot cheaper than going down that road.
Right, I mean, yeah.
Am I wrong?
I, I think it, I guess I don't, it's hard to say because I don't know how much that property's worth or how much they're going to want it, want for, for assessments and things like, or not assessments, but for easements and things like that. It's.
Easement in lieu of a paid parking lot's pretty cheap usually.
Right, but, but if you're buying a house.
Just saying.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm not saying it's not.
What, I mean, let's say you had to pay X for the house.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, is it going to save a hundred, five hundred thousand dollars to not have to jack it, try to do the work all overnight? Hey, maybe there's some we should look at.
Right, yeah, and that's something.
A half a million, it's a half a million.
Yeah.
Puts it down at, hey, let's do this range, not, oh geez, you know, do we have to? That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying this is a bad plan, it's just, I think outside the box sometimes. A little weird. Guys have dealt with me before, you know this.
Would we need an easement from Bartles to go through his?
Yes, you'd need one from DFA to go into their parking lot, but again, something could be worked out. Hey, we're not going to assess you on the parking lot portion of it because we're going to give, you know, in lieu of the easement. Hey, we're not going to affect their business, we're not going to affect their, you know, we should have to shut them down or curtail their truck deliveries because we're using their parking lot. Hey, maybe we let them park on the other side of the, you know, ambulance barn or wherever while we do it. But it takes a lot, instead of this, hey, we gotta get this done tonight because we gotta have that dock open tomorrow, that takes a lot of money on the project. You know, you could start at Bartles, work, work your way up, leave it with what's the street by the law office, I can't even remember the name of it.
Pleasant Avenue.
Pleasant Avenue, thank you. You could leave that, you could leave, you could block that one off, do all that, and then when you have to close that intersection, they can go right through there. It's done, done, and done. It was just an idea. Not trying to be, you know, because if we take a half million of the project, it's looking a lot easier to do, isn't it?
That'd be helpful. You would be able to get some cost, I mean, just jogging up and going out, but the other cost, the easement.
Those are up in here, I mean, you know, do we have to take the house? I mean.
I'm just curious, you know, how much.
Could you go through the yard, buy him a garage, you know, people are willing to work.
Yeah, I mean, it would, if you could, let's say, if you could eliminate the jacking altogether, you know, like I said, I think you'd probably save a couple hundred thousand in, was that the storm sewer, you'd probably save.
Two hundred feet, a thousand dollars per foot, right?
Yeah, you'd save a couple hundred, a couple hundred thousand for the storm sewer and then.
Not having to pave the street.
For the sanitary.
There's only going to pave one block now.
Why would you save that with the sewer?
Well, I think you'd still, you're not, say it again? Well, you'd be going from, if you're not jacking it, you're saving, your lineal foot cost goes way down.
Okay, okay.
Yep. You're not really saving anything on the street until you hit Hennepin Street because everything west of there, the county essentially is paying for.
Right, they're going to pay for that, right.
Um.
But you wouldn't have to do over to Pleasant Street, you're just that kind of project.
Yep, and you'd save, you'd save.
And all the way to Bartles.
Off the top of my head, here looking at these numbers, this is just really rough, but I mean, you'd save potentially for the, for the sanitary, you'd save, you know, maybe another hundred, maybe not quite. So you're looking at maybe, if you completely eliminate the jacking out here again, like I said, you know, we might, based on survey, we might determine that you wouldn't have to jack the sanitary if you left it in the road either, but, you know, the storm sewer is really that, I mean, that's ultimately the biggest, the biggest cost, yeah. Yep, but.
It's, you know, two more blocks of paving, we don't have to do it.
Are you talking the house down between Pleasant Avenue and Hennepin?
Yeah.
Rushmore.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just.
Snowball, yeah.
Because, you know, there's, there's enough yard there, you could put a sewer through there. They lose their garage, but hey, you came to me and said, I'm going to take out your little two-stall, you know, little stall and a half garage, I'm going to build you a three-stall garage in lieu for, that's pretty cheap easement.
Right, but I don't, I don't know if you're going to completely get away from redoing that road there either unless you didn't do any improvements.
I'm not an engineer, just an idea.
No, I'm just saying, just because, just, just, just because of the fact that you have water main in that road, so if you didn't, you know, if you'd still have to tear the road up to improve the water main.
What's two forty-fives? I mean, in a sixty-inch pipe, what's two forty-fives? It's nothing.
Yep.
You know?
It'd be two more structures is what it would, what it would be.
Yeah. You'd blue stick.
Is that something we should look at a little closer?
Certainly could, I'm not sure how I would, what I would get for, how I could figure out the cost for that, that property, but, I mean, we could certainly see what kind of an impact it would have on that property.
Well, there was a...
I mean, it's just a spitball.
Yep, I mean, you'd probably have to get some type of appraiser involved with that.
And the worst part is they just remodeled, you know, so it's...
Yeah, they just sold that and refitted it.
That's what I said, you know, you could do it in the front lawn, you know, you wouldn't have to touch the house, so...
Sorry.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering, we should get some numbers on it so we have a rough idea. I mean, I don't want to, there's a possibility of saving four to five hundred thousand in that, I think we should look at it.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know if it's going to get you quite to four or five, it might be three, be, you know, two fifty to three, maybe, just roughly looking at these...
That's without purchasing or easement?
That doesn't include any purch, I mean, that's just strictly from eliminating the need to jack those pipes. And like I said, you might not, in actuality, you might only be saving, the storm sewer jacking because if, if the survey shows that you don't need to jack the sanitary, then that's ultimately a wash. You, you would just say, you would, you'd essentially save that, you know, eighty grand, no matter what you did.
Would there be additional costs for the digging, the parking lot and replacing that, and what would those costs be?
Yeah, you'd have increased costs there because you'd be taking, you'd be taking the utilities out of an area that is getting paid for by the county for paving and you'd be adding paving costs for that parking lot.
Would it be possible to scale up this, um...
Yeah, we could put, we could put together a rough estimate, yeah. I, I'm not sure, like I said, you'd probably have to figure out, you talked to an appraiser about what...
Yeah, that we would have to do on our...
Yeah, I mean, could we even find out what the, just the construction costs would be, and then, you know, if that was worth pursuing, then we could continue with...
Yeah, I mean, we could, we, for sure, we could put together some construction cost estimates, yeah.
Would we have to condemn the house?
No, no, we may not even have to purchase ours.
Go across the lawn. Get an easement.
I mean, yeah, it, and, and that, that area is a little, it, it also is a little trickery too because it's a very narrow right of way also.
Let's take a look at that, but the other side, again, we're back to, um, what do we want to do? Do we want to build our reserves up a little bit? Do we want to slowly increase the, the rates? Are we wanting to move forward with the project as it is?
Well, we don't have to make a decision tonight.
Yes?
I'd recommend getting on the PFA's list though, doing it outward, getting on the list because, uh, you know, there are instances in our history, recent history, where PFA has more funding than not, and sometimes, you know, that means something with regard to projects we're willing to consider, so being on their list may, may open up an opportunity. It doesn't hurt, doesn't, most of the work is already done to get on the list, so I, I would say get on their list.
And we can still continue to move forward with the project until when? Six months after the April hearing, or a year?
We'll look it up, but I think it's a year.
So, we, we can still continue to go forward with the project without any, occurring any additional costs and then make a decision, so...
May I just give us time to take a look at D L A's, where it's going in?
Sorry, we do a lot of crazy stuff with the water pipes interactive, so...
No, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's definitely probably worth looking at.
All right, well, we're going to be somewhere, okay? Thank you, guys.
Um, so I guess, yeah, I'm still, yeah, I'm here for a little while yet. Um, before we, before we completely jump off of twenty nineteen, I just, I...
Keep spending money here, but...
I just, uh, um, want to let you know that that Phase One environmental assessment did get completed. Um, it's, it's like six hundred pages, it's big, so I'm not going to completely go through it. No, it, a lot of that is historical research and things like that, so it's not, I mean, the report, the actual, you know, the, the narrative is basically, you know, fifteen pages, but, um, you know, in a nutshell, basically, the, what the report found is that, yes, there have been spills in the area, um, they seem to have been cleaned up at least for the, or cleaned up to MPCA's, um, you know, approval, basically. Now, does that guarantee that there might not be anything that's encountered there? No, I mean, there might be spills that were never reported or, or something along those lines. Um, it's hard to say if some spill happened farther away, if that didn't somehow migrate, you know, still into the area, but, uh, but I mean, basically what the report kind of found is that, um, there's nothing that seems to be super alarming anyways. Um, so that's, you know, kind of a hopeful sign anyways that, you know, hopefully the project won't involve removing contaminated material. So, I guess that's really all I had to say on that unless you guys had any questions.
We all have a chance to read it today.
It's, it's kind of interesting stuff when you look at, I mean, some of the historical stuff in there, it's, I mean, if you're, if you're, if you like history, it's kind of interesting to look at. So, next, uh, the Brown Street project, I'm not sure if you folks had a chance to look at this, um, but if, if you recall back in, let's see, it's been a while, but back since, um, in October, it must have been November meeting that you spoke, um, I was asked to look at some drainage options for, for South Brown Street on that, by that garage. Um, and I'd come up with a couple of different low-cost options, but then I was asked to look at, um, what it would cost to pave that street with bituminous, um, basically make it a paved street. So, that's what I did, I went through and I looked, um, I got some record drawings from, um, from Joe, um, and it turns out that there is, that there was sanitary that was installed there in two thousand and five, so that's infrastructure that's already in, there's water, um, water main that looks like it was installed in, you know, seventy-four, seventy-four to seventy-eight in that timeframe, so that, I think that water main's probably, probably in, you know, good enough shape where that wouldn't have to be replaced if you guys decided to do something with Brown Street. Um, the existing gravel road is about, on average, twenty-three feet wide, which is, which is narrower than a typical city street that's paved. So, I guess, and I guess whilst jumping back over to the hut, to the, the water main, there is three hydrants along the road, um, the northernmost two are spaced about six hundred and sixty feet apart, um, typically will space them no more than five hundred feet apart, so, um, that's just something I wanted to, wanted to bring to your attention. Um, so, what I did for these cost estimates is I took a look at, um, widening the street to a thirty, like more of a standard thirty-two foot, uh, wide street with curb and gutter, um, and that should fit within the existing right of way, which I, seems to be based on those old drawings, about sixty-six feet or two, you know, a standard sixty-six foot, uh, right of way. Um, as far as the pavement section, I, I basically just assumed it would be something similar to what we did with the last A Street, Eighth Street project, so, three and a half inches of bituminous, uh, five inches of class five, and then twelve inches of a sand subbase, um, and then, then curb and gutter also.
Eleven hundred.
Otherwise, that's kind of, oh, and then also the, the storm sewer, so, the, uh, the culvert, there's currently a culvert on the south end, that's like a fifteen inch CMP culvert, and that drains, as I talked about the last time, that drains to basically city right of way at the west end of High Street, and then it doesn't really go anywhere, it doesn't really seem to go anywhere. So, what I, what I did as part of this project is, the road, you'd have to put a couple catch basins in that same general area because that would still probably be the low spot, and then you'd have an intake on the west side of the road, and then that water would be conveyed under the road to that, that right of way still. Um, but now being that you're increasing the runoff potential basically by paving more, more of that right of way, um, and being that the, um, you know, there's really nowhere for that to go, you would still probably need to extend some storm sewer down High Street, and then what I'm recommending here is that you'd put some type of a dry basin to, um, give it some temporary storage while the downstream, um, storm sewer could kind of catch up because that, that is undersized, uh, by today's standards also, which, uh, is, is kind of a theme, but that's also because, um, um, you know, the design storms and, and the design criteria have kind of changed, changed over time. So, I guess as part of that, um, I figured, it's, it's city right of way, I'm not sure if there's ever any plans to extend, you know, fully extend High Street to the west, but basically it would just be, um, not very deep, but it would be just a place for the water basically to back up until it had somewhere to go. Now, on the north side, what I had proposed is, um, basically just two catch basins on the very north end of where, where we would stop paving, and then I did speak to Minnesota Prairie, Minnesota Prairie Railroad, um, and they didn't seem to be in too much favor of the city outletting that storm sewer into their ditch, so what I did is I put together some costs for what it would cost to run a swale basically along that existing city property, essentially right along the tree line, um, all the way to the county road ditch, and then it would go from there underneath the road into the, um, county pond. There's, uh...
I mean, it'd go up to the road?
It'd go up to the road, and then there's a culvert under the road fairly, I think it's, uh, thirty, I'm not sure if I have it on any of these maps, it's, it's a thirty inch, uh, culvert that goes under the road there, Edwood Street or Casaw Thirty-Three, and then it would ultimately end up in that.
Holding button.
Yep. So, that's kind of a real brief summary, I guess, of kind of, um, my thought process as far as that goes. I mean, the problem is, is, you know, you're, you're increasing drainage and then you got to find somewhere to go and you don't want to create a, you know, more of a problem downstream than maybe there already is. So, there again, so kind of the cost estimate includes both paving Brown Street, including, um, includes digging this, you know, the pond and the swale, um, doing that storm sewer extension on Brown Street, and then also, you know, you'd have to repave a portion of Brown Street. Um, and then also another thing to add is that I did, did include sub drainage on this road, just like we've been doing on every other street to, you know, um, hopefully extend kind of the life, the life cycle of the road. So, that's basically it as far as, you know, I guess, kind of my, like I say, my thought process on the design side of it. The total I came up with for the street, the storm sewer, and, um, adding an additional hydrant to, um, kind of close that coverage gap, which you can kind of see, um, on that last page, you can kind of see that those, the hydrant coverage map there where that, that one hydrant went kind of fill in that, that missing area there. But yeah, the total cost came out to about five hundred and seventy thousand, and that's, kind of where we're at with that. And then if you, I did include at the back end, just because it's been a while, um, kind of what we were looking at for other options, um, you know, they're significantly cheaper, but then again, they're also, you know, that was kind of the idea behind those other options too. So, this, you know, it started basically with there was some water getting, you know, impounded basically behind a driveway, and then we're kind of looking at a, a, a pretty broad spectrum of what options are out there, I would say, but...
I don't think, uh, Haynes is in, in for that much. He's not even in the city, so...
He is not.
In that much, that's ridiculous.
So, did you do pave one side of the street and not the other, or?
Well, you would probably, yeah, I don't know how that would work.
There's a policy, after three years, we have to hook up through the city.
He has to?
And that, it's way overdue.
Yeah, there's water and sanitary services there for all those properties along Brown Street already.
Does he, does he get water?
Yes.
And sewer? Every month?
Yes.
No...
He can have, he can have sanitary.
Right, but he doesn't.
But the pipe is there, but he doesn't get it?
But the city could force him to hook up.
Okay.
The street doesn't go through though, does it?
No, it goes up to the track.
Can we get that open again?
You can't.
Why can't we?
On the railroad, at a state or somebody says you got to close this.
We tend if we maintain it.
Um, I guess one other thing I did notice when I was looking at the sanitary, um, the plans for when they put the sanitary in, it did look like at one time there was a culvert under that driveway, I'm not sure if it never got put back in as part of that project, if it was removed or, or what, but I mean, it did seem, it did look like there was a ten inch culvert that at one time was, was, well, it was under that driveway where they're having the drainage issues.
Yeah, where, oh, it started, where the problem started to me.
Yeah, yeah. So...
And if I, if you want to go forward with this, there is a resolution we need to pass, but, which I passed.
Yeah, I mean, it's nothing you'd have to pass tonight, but I, I just added it, you know, similar to any of these other projects, if, if you're planning to assess any portion of it, you'd have to go through the fort, the statute four twenty-nine process, which would involve, um, completion of a feasibility study, which would essentially be taking this and then adding a little bit more to it. Being that it is pretty flat and we're, we're looking at not a whole lot of elevation change, I, I guess I would recommend that a survey would be done of the area bef, as part of a feasibility project, just to make sure that we're not seeing something's feasible that really at the end of the day isn't, because, you know, in order to get the water from Brown Street to the ditch, or from Brown Street to the storm sewer on High Street, you just might not have the elevation there to do it. So, I think it's something that should probably be consi, you know, something that should be considered if, if the city decides to move forward with the feasibility.
So, all that water would move north then, or what I would con...
It would basically...
In that swale, kind of?
Not all of it, no, it, it would kind of split, how do I describe it? If, if you know where that, uh, the hydrant is, kind of at the end of High Street there, if you go a little further north, it would kind of split half, you know, not maybe half, but close to half would go north and half would go basically to the High Street storm sewer ultimately.
Well, you know, he asked for it, so I guess we should have some kind of a hearing to let the people know what's going on and then kind of...
Who asked for it, Pete?
The guy, uh, Henderson, Kurt, or whatever.
Well, do you want to have the street committee meet and go over these options?
That's what I recommend, is have the street committee look at it and see what...
Yeah, and I mean, like I said, there, at one time, there seemed to be, like there was a culvert under that driveway, you know, looking back at those, that sanitary sewer drawing from when that was installed, so I don't know if that culvert is buried now or, uh, just was never put back in or was taken out at some point, I'm not sure.
No, I don't know what those people's property taxes are, like Bob always said, without a blacktop road in there, but I know that's, I know they love to have the road and the water gone, but they don't want to pay this, but I mean, for the road, but...
Right.
You know, uh...
I will, uh, call us...
It's not like they're not in the city limits and not paying.
I think we got a lot of things to talk about and think about.
You have to prioritize what's really important. Um, but let's have the street committee take a look at that, maybe come back with some recommendations, maybe it's something, it's not really so expensive, just to, you know, some of the water problems that he's had.
Okay, um, it wasn't on the agenda, but I'm not sure if you're sick of me or not, but, um, Jenny did ask me to put together, um, it sounds like the council must have, approved something regarding sidewalk in the city, that the city would pay for a portion of sidewalk costs or something in that effect a while back, so she had asked me to put together some, um, some specs maybe the city would want to adopt, adopt as far as, you know, the sidewalks go, like design standards and things like that. I'm not sure if that got included in your packet, but...
No, it did not.
I did give you a copy tonight, so if it's something you want to look over and, and maybe Gordy wants to also, and then, um, you know, if there's any questions or revisions to that you guys would like to see, then we can certainly, you know, take it over to bat too. But, uh, if, if you guys haven't, haven't looked at it, probably doesn't pay to talk about it tonight.
I think that's a good idea.
Are you have any questions behind, Brian?
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, next on the agenda is a request from Chambered Co-Host Lepre Clean Up Team.
Yes. Um, the Chamber would like the city to pay half, and they would pay half of Clean Up Day, uh, it would be after citywide garage sales, with the thought being that any junk people had, they could dump at the dump. You would probably have it down at the fire station where they have currently the recycling. We got a couple quotes, Melissa got a quote from Brenville Sibley, they would come in and give us three thirty-yard dumpsters and charge us three hundred and twenty-five dollars to them. And Gaylor Sanitation did not get back to her today, but the thing, the information I have from last April when I talked to them was, it would be a hundred and fifty-dollar delivery fee and then seventy-five dollars a ton to dump it. So, um...
Are we talking anything?
No, we would have to, well, I don't think we would have to have somebody down there manning it, but somebody, the Chamber would probably have to have somebody down there manning.
Absolutely.
Twenty-four, seven.
Well, it would just be one day. I mean, it's not like it's going to be left there overnight. They would come, they would be there for a certain time, they would leave three dumpsters, it'd be from eight to five, and at five o'clock, they'd roll up the dumpsters and-
Let's pull, let's pull.
Yeah. I think it sounds like a good idea.
The only thing is, you know, you've got somebody to pre-tamper their house down there.
There would be no appliances, I mean, they could bring mattresses, they could bring furniture, but no house, no hazardous ways.
They could check on the mattresses too.
I think they said they could bring mattresses, yeah.
I just got rid of a couple, they're not bad, 20 lots of DCs, right?
But they were talking about coordinating this with garage surveys?
Yeah, so then like people had their garage sale stuff and a lot of other towns too, so they would like, they've always wanted to do it, I ask every year.
We could try it, I guess.
Do you want to set a limit up to?
Why should I pay for somebody else to get rid of their garbage? I got 24-hour cops, I got a nuisance ordinance and the ability to assess them. You want to clean it up, send the cops over, cite them. Done.
But there is that community pride too, and, you know, it's not always, it's not just somebody trying to take advantage of it, it could be somebody cleaning up.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure there's going to be some people taking that.
Well, you're right.
So this is something Chamber does every year?
No, they would like to, but they don't want to.
We didn't do it last year.
So our cost would be 300 or half of that?
But they would like the city to pay half, whatever you guys want to contribute to half of that.
So the one estimate you had was 300?
330. Yeah, $75 total, 325 total, and that was through, for three 30-yard dumpsters.
You know, people are going to come down there with paint and oil.
But they won't be able, they won't be able to take that.
Who's going to stand there?
Well, that's-
You probably have to have, I mean, when they do that in other communities too, it's, it's always really clear.
It's a hazardous waste.
And they have somebody, right, you can't collect that.
Well, we have that kind of cleanup too, the county does that.
County.
Well, I move that we match or split it with the Chamber up to the city's portion, $175.
Okay.
Is a motion made?
Just to get things moving.
Is there a second? Is there a second? If there's no second, for lack of a second, I believe the motion is done.
Well, it's all right. I will let Doug know.
All right, ordinance adopting MediaCom franchise agreement.
Oh, this is basically the same franchise agreement we had for RS Fiber. The Cable Commission reviewed it, recommends approval, Dunn's reviewed it, said it looked fine.
Can I get a motion?
So move.
Motion made. A second?
Second.
A second, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Not, proceed to vote, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, motion carries. We scratched E, so we're to Cable Commission resignation.
Mark has resigned from the Cable Commission, I have an ad, I'll put it in the paper, I can run it for two weeks, we'll interview and hopefully have somebody to appoint at the next council meeting.
Now, that is the, the one that, with the school and-
Yep.
Is that a full-time position?
It's a volunteer position.
It's voluntary.
They meet once a month.
But I think we need somebody active in that. Okay, unfinished business, city reports and the administrator.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, yeah, most of the month was getting year-end reports done, thankfully that is all done. We met with Pat Bartels to discuss the 2019 Street project, we also met with Sibley County to discuss the 2019 Street project, both meetings went well, I think, Don, you were, you were there for the one. I attended MMUA board meeting in Maple Grove with Minnesota Rural Electric, that was just to get, you know, see how we can work together and kind of just start discussions. Brian came to the Planning Commission meeting to introduce himself, we're starting discussing the comp plan update, oh, that's right, you weren't there, were you, Don? We're going to start going through one to two chapters at each Planning Commission meeting, so as we go through it, we will start having public hearings, open houses for people to come and become more involved. He's putting together a survey that we can distribute to people via utility bills, newspaper, online and whatnot. I attended the Cable Commission meeting, we approved a bill for legal services, which was basically to review the franchise agreement, Ken is working on the audit with Melissa, Gordy and I have started talking about AMI systems again, hopefully we can get some more information together and start getting you guys some information maybe this summer. Joe is stepping down as full-time water sewer operator after we hired somebody new, but he is willing to stay on and train that new person. The water sewer committee met tonight with Joe and talked about it a little bit, about how we're going to move forward with that. I'm going to put together a job description and we're going to meet again and go over it and hopefully at the March meeting, I will have, be able to ask for permission to advertise, so.
When does he want to?
Whenever.
Whenever?
Yeah. We have a set a date for the computer training for businesses to claim their webpage, it'll be March 7th from 12 to 1:00. There's 15 laptops at the Innovation Center and room for 10 more people to bring their own. If there's enough demand, we'll add another session that evening, and there's lots going on in Winter this month, so hopefully you guys can get out and see it. Do you want me to read my, the EDA director's report too?
Go ahead. The EDA director.
I attended Winthrop Opportunities Meeting, Shop Local, Rural Broadband Coalition, Sibley Housing, Sibley County EDA lunch and a conference call for Rural Broadband Day. We were supposed to have a Sibley Housing team, but it got actually moved to last week, which we did meet, and with a group from New Ulm, we will all be attending the Housing Institute, there are five sessions over the next 18 months. I attended a webinar in New Ulm regarding the future of retail businesses, I do have a flyer on that, we did not get a chance to discuss it at the EDA meeting, but I would like to put it on future agenda. I've done some training on the website, but there's some things I want to upload yet and some things I want to change, and I'm working with Lime Valley to kind of familiarize myself with their format and get, get things up to date. I met with Barb Johnson to take her picture for the Shop Local campaign and discuss her business, she said it's listed for sale, but she's in no hurry to sell it. I did email her some information to help her with the sale if she was interested, and I will touch base with her again once I have the website back up. I sent some information on revolving loans and the paint-up program to a couple of business, the new owners of the Laundromat and Daisy Learning Center, I have not gotten a response. Doug asked me about a map of the EDA in city properties for sale, I did get a map put together, but I did not put it on the agenda for the EDA meeting this month because it was a pretty big agenda at this point. And we discussed the job description a little bit and we'll probably bring up the visioning session coming up in future meetings. And we did also approve to update the logo a little bit, so.
All right, any questions for Jenny? If not, Don, was there anything you want to speak up?
No, sir.
Okay. Gordy, did you have anything?
No.
No. All right. And everybody's got the police chief's report. All right, anything else on the agenda?
I'd like to, did everybody get a letter to that RS Fiber's raising their rates?
That's for the TV.
Oh, I know, but before we start raising everybody's cost there, were you going to say something?
No, I'll wait till you're done. Didn't even interrupt you, sorry. Do we have any say in that? I don't know, I don't know how that all works, I mean, that's-
Well, I don't know if we have any say in it.
I mean, I can't go and tell the grocery store-
We're on the hook for it.
Make a gallon on his mail.
No, well-
We're on the hook for it because we, we agreed, you know, I, I understand business is business.
It's my understanding that the cost of the programming has gone up.
That's what the letter said.
Because MediaCom sent us a notice today too that their costs were going up as well.
Well, that's, that's fair, that's fair.
Because they're all, they're all paying the same amount, so if ABC is charging more for that programming, all the cable companies, any video providers paying that increase.
All I'm saying is RS Fiber was a sore spot for a lot of people.
Well, they've been making their, from the Joint Powers Board point of view, all-
I have no problem with it.
Right, all their reports are good, Shannon provides quarterly reports to the Joint Powers Board and they, he doesn't see anything that they won't be able to make their payments.
I wasn't doubting that, I'm just, if we want to raise water rates, you know, different things, you know, you got to watch out. Winthrop's got a lot of people that haven't got a lot of money.
I think that all small towns are-
They're probably all that way, yeah.
With every, everyone-
I shouldn't say that, but yeah.
I think financially, Winthrop is doing well, I mean, we don't have a huge amount of debt, I think we're, we're taking our time.
On the cable, is it MediaCom's providing service to the following things? What, what do they mean by that?
They provide a drop.
They provide what?
A drop.
What is that?
A line.
A wire.
Yeah, with TV.
So we get free TV here at City Hall from them?
And Gordy gets free TV at the shop.
Just work it out.
We get free TV.
At the shop!
Free cable.
Weather channel, weather channel.
Fire department has it, we got it.
Holy fuck.
I was just curious.
It's just TV.
Are we going to do something about the mics? We can't hear nothing.
Do you not want to leave here tonight? Do you not want to leave here tonight or what?
Okay, I'll go.
You can't leave until I get a motion to a-.
You can sit up closer.
There's a motion made to adjourn.
So move.
Is that a second?
That's a second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries.
Anybody else?
The mouse you were showing me here.
Excuse me, Jenny.